We will take up one action item for approval. Action item one A is the approval of the minutes of the March eleventh, 2024 meeting. I move the approval of action item one A. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I abstain.
Okay. Well, here then, may I have a vote to approve the minutes all in favor?
Aye.
You pause, one abstention noted. The item passes. With no other items, action items on the agenda, we will move on to information items. Today, we will be introduced to Associate Vice Chancellor and University Vice Provost for Research, Rose Marie Wesson, who assumed her role in December 2023. Dr. Wesson previously served as the Associate Dean for Research in the Grove School of Engineering, as well as Associate Provost for Research at City College, where she expanded the research portfolio by thirty percent while overseeing research development grants contracts, the annual care facility, and research compliance and ethics. Just a little bit of things to do. Throughout her academic career, Dr. Wesson has held faculty positions at various prominent institutions, including the City College, University of Maryland, Louisiana State University, and Ohio State University. Her industry experience spans over two decades at the Dow Chemical Company. Additionally, Dr. Wesson has a leadership role for over thirteen years at the National Science Foundation. Her dedication to advancing diversity is evident through numerous recognitions, including the Minority Affairs Committee's eminent Chemical Engineer Award from the American Institute of Chemical Engineers. Dr. Wesson's achievement also extends to her contributions to scientific communities as she was appointed as a Fellow from the American Association for the Advancement of Science and elected to the Board of Directors of American Institute of Chemical Engineers. Dr. Wesson has a bachelor's in chemical engineering from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, followed by a master's and doctorate in chemical engineering from the University of Michigan. We will now ask Associate Vice Chancellor Wesson to present the Office of Research report to include its mission, vision, and priorities. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I hope everyone can hear me, and I believe we do have someone online.
Yes, that's another trustee.
Great.
Ashwin?
It's on.
Okay.
Okay. So, thank you for having me. I am pleased with the wonderful introduction, and I look forward to getting to know everyone a little bit better. As was said, this is my first meeting here. I've been here for five months, and I guess it'll be six months on June first. But I missed the last board meeting that I think was in March. So, this is actually my first introduction to you guys. So, please feel free to ask me as many questions as you have, and we will get started. Correct, Roberto?
Yes.
Now the magic must happen.
This is how we harass new people.
Right. You're all ready to go. The worst, the worst part, the slides don't work. And then you have to fill this empty space with like chatter.
I keep looking on my tablet.
Oh, so you want me to point it there?
No, no.
It's not pulling up.
I think it's so big. We've been having a lot of trouble with this presentation, but go ahead, go ahead.
They didn't tell you about the hazing of the first meeting?
No, they didn't tell, they didn't tell me that, but okay. So, first, let me just describe and hopefully familiarize you guys with the Office of Research here at CUNY. So, we actually have three different areas within CUNY, within the Office of Research. The RDP is the Research Development Program. RIC is Research Integrity and Compliance. And INE is Innovation and Entrepreneurship Section. What we're looking for is to move research within CUNY. That's, that's basically our mission, that we want to grow it, we want to make sure that research is in the forefront, but we also want to make sure that we're compliant with our research and that we're also looking at innovation and entrepreneurship for our CUNY researchers. Let's go forward. My other right. So, whenever I make a presentation as EBC Hensel and President Hector, no, I, I talk about expenditures. And so, I want to familiarize everyone with the expenditures through CUNY. You'll see that this chart goes from FY nineteen to FY twenty-three. So, that's over five years. You'll also see that it's divided up into four different categories and then a total. So, research comes first. These are awards that are specifically for research, I'm sorry, these are expenditures that are specifically for research, designated for research. We also receive awards and therefore have expenditures in training of our students. Those are separated out from the research category. But it's, it's still awards received by CUNY, expenditures spent by CUNY, but it's for training of our students.
So, a postdoctoral fellowships, if you've got an NIH, you know, does that, which category?
It depends if there's research associated with it. It would go under the research.
If it's a, if it's a scientific, it goes to research.
If it does a salary for a postdoc, it goes under research. But if it's solely defined graduate students or undergraduate students that are on fellowships or, or training, then it goes under training.
Okay, thank you.
The other one, other sponsored activity, these are things that generally the state or the city can give awards, and we have expenditures associated with other sponsored activities. Those fall in that category. And the last category is the other institutional activity, for instance, seed funding activities that we may have here at CUNY. That's the, the fourth category. The thing that I'd like to point out, and I don't know if I have a pointer that can be seen, don't go, don't. I didn't mean to go forward. So, let me, let me just point out a couple of things on this slide, and then we'll talk. So, what I'm impressed about is, remember, we went through a pandemic. So, the pandemic was actually began in FY twenty. So, it was March of 2020. So, just in case, the fiscal years are from July one to June thirtieth of the following year. So, FY twenty is our pandemic year where it began. What I'm very impressed about is that our research expenditures have, did not decrease during the pandemic. Our researchers were in the lab. Now, we were separated by six feet. We were careful about the COVID designations, but research continued during the pandemic. Training in terms of our student fellowships, our student scholarships, that decreased, you can see that decreased, as well as the other sponsored activity decreased and the institutional activity decreased. But on the whole, if you look at all of those categories combined, our total expenditures is over $550 million. Our research expenditures are actually over $200 million specifically associated with research.
Thank you. I just, I had a question. Can you describe a couple of the things that fall under other sponsored activities? Excuse me. I was, sorry. I was struck by the fact that those expenditures relative to the research expenditures are actually, it's a pretty sizable component. I don't typically see that. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So, you're saying the other institutional?
Other sponsored.
Other sponsored. What types of, what types of activities fall into that?
Yeah, those are things that come to CUNY Central.
So, for example, I am the number one PI because most of it is through the Office of Academic Affairs, things that come from the city, from the state, for project oriented activity. So, for example, you know, we talk a lot about the internships. That would be funneled through the other, that, that.
Okay.
Hector, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
He, um, CUNY has some facilities, theaters, others, that may generate some income. Sometimes it goes in that category. We can provide the committee with specific details on what's included in each category and the coding schema that we use.
Yeah, I think I was just curious.
The city is the biggest sponsor of that.
And they're sponsoring sort of things that you wouldn't count as research? They're not?
Programs like internship funds for students and all of the CUNY inclusive economy, the different pieces would fall into.
Childcare, childcare centers.
School of Public Health get some of that?
We, we in the School of Public Health get contracts with the City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, for example, and with Health and Hospital Corporation.
Yeah.
And they come under sponsored programs. Some of them are training programs. Some of them are evaluation programs. So, they're really a service we're providing to these institutions, and they are not legitimate research programs, although some of them are evaluations.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
For a typical R1 university, should research be a bigger percentage of the total than it is?
So, you, you bring up a, a good, good conversation. First of all, we are not an R1 institution.
We should be.
Thank you, we should be. The Graduate Center is the only R1 entity within CUNY. City College is an R2 institution, but that's it.
That's it.
That's it. Now, the fact that we have, on the order of 700,000 faculty members across CUNY?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand faculty members across CUNY, $200 million worth of research is, it can grow. How's that? We have potential to grow.
It can grow. I'm not sure I would agree that we should, like, I think that there's real honest debate to be had about what role we play in the university market and that our role in, especially when you take in our community colleges and we talk about mobility. I mean, I think universities that center themselves around research, it's not that I'm against them, having worked in several at the same, but the dedication to students that we have gets lost in the shuffle sometimes. And so, I think it's a, it's a real debate that we have to.
And it's a conversation.
It's a balance, right? It's a, there are trade-offs to folks, to having a faculty that are in the publisher parish schemata. They, they lose the passion because they're forced to lose passion for education and mobility.
But you've keyed me up for more conversations, but John?
I'll just chime in. So, City College, Hunter College seem to have fairly substantial grant fundraising, but there are some other campuses lagged behind. So, at CSI, our biology department doesn't produce maybe what it should. Our chemistry department's on the small scale, but it performs at weight. So, there, there are pockets of performance and pockets where there's not. I push back that the faculty at City College aren't doing a good job for their students, if that's the implication.
No, that wasn't the implication. I was talking about a university ethos, which is, and really, I just wanted to engage in a debate about if our university ethos is going to shift towards being a research university. I think that is a, that's a decision to be made that's not without downstream consequences. And that's not to say that we don't have room to grow. I think we absolutely have room to grow our research portfolio. It was a broader 30,000-foot level question that I had. I wasn't casting aspersions at folks who are successful. I was talking about, you know, what's the difference between being a Barnard, a Barnard student and being a Columbia College student? If you were a Columbia College student, you were in the middle of a, a lot of those classes were taught by faculty that were, that were often very focused on research. And it was not a teaching college, right? Same university, different ethos.
I'll just say quickly, and Rose is going to address this here in just a second, but I think it's important to say, we are having these conversations, especially as fostered by the changes to the Carnegie classifications that she'll touch on in a minute. A few things to keep in mind. Teaching mode has a lot to do with the ability of a faculty member to engage, and that's one of the key issues in terms of balancing. I will say, from my experience, it is deeply connected. The excellence of teaching and the research endeavor are combined. So, I don't think it's an either or proposition. I think they both actually contribute mightily to each other. And so, part of the conversation we're having is how do we enrich both of those things by increasing the sponsored funding and our students' engagement within it? So, I know you.
Also, a reminder, our dear trustee, that we have 30,000 graduate students at CUNY at the current moment. Thirty thousand graduate students. And research plays a slightly different role
Yes, absolutely.
with the graduate students in terms of it being integral to their education and scholarship. We, as a School of Public Health, are a small school. We're a graduate school only. We have a thousand students. We have fifty faculty. We closed our books last year with $35 million in research expenditures or sponsored program expenditures. And as such, you know, it's not fair to have the denominator of all the faculty because our university has several tiers of faculty that play different roles. And so, I agree completely with you that at the community college, the responsibility of faculty is enormous, and their role is, for the city, is essential at a different level than it would be, for example, for a graduate school like ourselves or other, like School of Professional Studies and so on.
That's fair.
So, what I do want to also talk about is, before we get into the presentation, talking about our, our vision in terms of the CUNY's, the CUNY's vision of lifting New York. So, our long-term goal, and that is long-term until 2030, is that we have a target of increasing the total grant dollars awarded by 20% and the total number of funded grants also by 20%. Now, I'm not going to show the data now. You know, these, these targets were, were actually, it's a three-year weighted average, but we're on the road to, to meeting that goal. We've already increased our research grant dollars by seven percent as of 2023. So, we're on the road to meet, to meet the 20% increase. But that is one of the visions for CUNY in terms of the research, Office of Research. So, what do I see my job as? So, as I said, I've been in this role now for about five months. It'll be six months in June. But the Office of Research has a vision as well, and I like to concisely say that what we're here to do is remove barriers. We're here to make it easier for our faculty to perform research and to report about the research. So, the things that I'm going to talk about today include CAIUs, and I think you guys have heard a lot about CAIUs in the past. I'll give you an update on that. I'll also talk about the research newsletter that we've updated. We're trying to make sure that we're communicating across CUNY all of the good research that we're doing. And we're, we're modernizing, we're, we're upgrading the newsletter. But I'm going to start out talking about, we're looking at accurately reporting the research landscape here at CUNY. And what do I mean by that? So, I showed the graph, and if you noticed at the bottom, it was based on RF CUNY data, the Research Foundation data. We go to Hector, we get any kind of data we want relative to research from the Research Foundation. And we want to make sure that what we're reporting is consistent with what the faculty are doing. And why does it matter? These numbers that we report, they're used by U.S. News and World Report, they're used by Princeton Review, they're used by Carnegie to look at how do we compare CUNY, City University of New York? How do we compare with other institutions around the country? How do our campuses compare with other colleges around the country? So, it's not that we're just reporting numbers. These numbers actually matter.
Rose, if I can add, one thing that I think it's easy to forget is how significant this can be in recruiting faculty. You know, it is, it is not incidental whether we have an R1 or an R2 in trying to bring world-renowned researchers in. And we certainly have those here. So, it's, it's more than just a reputational piece. It really is fundamental to our ability to recruit talent.
Are we, when we're talking about the increases, are we focusing on particular campuses or are we talking about?
So, the increase that I reported was overall, our overall average. And that's the increase that we're looking at. How do we, as 25 institutions, how do we, as 25 colleges and institutions? How do we grow together? Not growing one, not growing, not everyone succeeding at the same level, not everyone failing at the same level. How do we grow together? So, that's the overall.
I can also add, I, I know most of you know this, but it's easy to forget that not every discipline has the ability to grow at the same amount, right? So, as the former dean of a college of law, very small amounts would be a significant success compared to what's available in the sponsored funding realm. So, obviously, some of our colleges are situated to grow much more significantly than others based on the mix of disciplines and research that are going on. Does not diminish the significance and importance of the research that's happening in those locations.
So, you guys really want to take this to Carnegie, but I'm not there yet. And I'm not there in this presentation yet. So, we did have those discussions, and, and those discussions are still going on. But what came out of those discussions is that currently we're relying on the Research Foundation to give us research data, to provide research data. What we have not done is look at our tax levy research dollars, our research dollars that are also from foundations that are related to research, and added those numbers to our expenditure numbers from the Research Foundation. Now, when we talk about what are our tax levy dollars? GRTI, our Graduate Research Training Initiative. We give equipment grants throughout CUNY for research, for research equipment. These expenditures are not counted through the RF number. We have startup funds. Now, admittedly, faculty, we haven't hired as many faculty as we would like to, but we do have startup funds that have not been added to the research expenditure data. And the big one, the big one is tuition remission. We have tuition remission from the Graduate Center primarily that has not been added. And the Graduate Center has looked at these numbers, and they see it's between 40 and maybe as high as $60 million worth of unreported research expenditures that should be added to those numbers. So, right now, when we talk about $200 million of research expenditures, we could be unreporting by anywhere 20 to 30% of our actual research that's going on throughout CUNY that has not been reported. Question, looks like we got, no? But this is easier said than done. One of the reasons we report the RF numbers is because we can call Hector and say, can you give us this data? And they have it all coded out. They can give it to us in, in particular departments, fiscal years, colleges. They have access to that data. Tax levy-wise, we have to piece through what's going on at individual campuses, what's going on at the individual programs. And so, for FY twenty-four, we're doing that investigation now. And the guy, the, the idea is that going forward, we will have the appropriate codes in place so that we can run the queries to have our total research expenditures reported accurately and reflect currently what's going on. So, are we R1, are we R2? We don't know yet because we don't have a good grasp on our total research expenditures. Yep, John?
Pardon my ignorance, but is it awards that get compared across universities or expenditures? Because I'm a little worried about if there's a growing gap between awards and expenditures. Somebody somewhere is going to say, this is a very expensive proposition and try and throw the baby out with the bathwater. And that, 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 to me, is a real concern at the campus I work at. So, I know it's something that, that can grow and scale.
So, when I give him presentation, when I give presentations, I talk about expenditures. Expenditures is what is compared, and it's specifically HERD, Higher Education Research and Development expenditures. So, we can report all those other sections. Training, institutional awards, institutional expenditures. But when you're comparing to other campuses, you want to compare apples to apples. So, other universities and colleges use the HERD data, the Higher Education Research Development expenditures data for comparisons. When you're talking about Princeton Review, when you're talking about Carnegie, when you're talking about U.S. News and World, everybody uses HERD expenditures as the apples-to-apples comparison. You're right. And I'll say another thing. The, the awards data is, is generally higher, and it lag, expenditures lag behind awards. But the awards data also can have peaks and valleys because when, when an institution is given an award, they sometimes receive, say it's a $10 million award, they sometimes receive the entire award in a fiscal year. So, then your award data will increase by 10 million, but that next fiscal year, it will decrease by 10 million. But your expenditures is a more level way of seeing growth or decrease because those don't have the peaks and valleys. So, so I talk mostly about expenditures and, and, and trying to make that apples-to-apples comparison. So, relative to expenditures, you'll see that these are the things that count, so to speak. The, the federal and non-federal awards and expenditures that we receive, that we make as a result of those awards, that's what counts. Startup funds, that's what counts. Equipment funds, that's what counts. And at the bottom, you'll see the tuition remission. That's what counts. So, before we start having, are we R1, are we R2? Are we, is this worthy of a discussion? We need to find out where we are in terms of our total research expenditures. My guess is that we are between 250 and 300 million dollars worth of total research expenditures across CUNY. That's already, you know, a 30, maybe even, if we're lucky, a 50% jump in what has been reported previously. But we've got to take the time to find out where we are and to do the appropriate tracking in our tax levy and foundation research. You don't know how many times I go to a campus and people say, oh, we have this great undergraduate research program that's funded by XYZ Foundation, and we're supporting hundreds of undergraduate students annually. Is that counted in our expenditure data? No, it's not because it's coming through a foundation, and it's not being funded through the, it's not being channeled through the Research Foundation. It's a foundation that's giving fellowships and scholarships to undergraduate students. We need to count those dollars. That's all I'm saying. I'll say a little bit more in terms of what else we need to count, if I can figure out which ways forward. We also need to count our graduate students. The other important point is not only our expenditures, but how many doctoral graduates do we have that are performing research within CUNY? It turns out, a number of the PhDs are categorized as professional practice just because they may have, and, and we found this out when we investigated a little bit further. The EDDs, the Doctorates in Education, are generally categorized as professional practice. However, if they perform a thesis, if they have a dissertation, they should be categorized as research. So we're losing out in that respect as well because it hasn't been important. We just checked the box, it's a PhD graduate, professional practice, okay. We just checked the box. But we need to go back and we in the Office of Research are currently going back to make the determination, is this a research PhD or is it a professional practice PhD? It matters. It matters when we report these numbers and we just generally have not been taking that into account.
And foundation grants don't go through the RF? I mean, I just thought they-
Let me clarify, I think the concept of foundation being used here refers to the college-operated foundations.
Oh, not an external foundation?
Well, I, I, I won't speak for, for Dr. Wesson. The RF reports a hundred percent of what the RF receives.
Right.
But it's not received through the RF, which may be tax levy money, or my understanding is Dr. Wesson's referring to the college foundations.
Yes.
It's not something that the RF sees, so there's no way we could report it. So I'll let Dr. Wesson clarify what she means.
Sometimes people are not sending things to the RF that they should be under the agreement.
That is entirely correct.
Disclosure, because people are trying to-
Circumvent.
Circumvent.
But, but foundations in terms of supporting scholarships and fellowships are allowed to be recipients and they are, according to the policy, allowed to give those to the recipients without the Research Foundation.
And this is the college-operated foundations.
You're not talking about like Ford Foundations?
No.
Ford Foundations are-
Well, but, 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 if, 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 if a college gets a grant from the Ford Foundation, a college can place that grant with the Research Foundation as the agreement calls for. But a college also can deposit that outside grant in a college-controlled foundation that is not the Research Foundation.
Well, that seems to need to be changed.
And we have more than twenty of those foundations.
We need, we need-
Almost every college has-
We need better consistent and, and follow through on this.
Right, as part of the revision of the MOU, this is something that has to be looked at, but there are situations-
Well, the, the language, the language currently, the language currently says all. So, so my, my, my discussion with Derek Davis and group has been, we're happy to continue to do all. If what we're gonna do is some, then that should be spelled out in the memorandum and the conditions under which something would go to A versus B should be spelled out.
It just seems like from a reporting position, which you're saying how important the numbers are and that you're under support, that it all should go to one place where you can do one query and get the right number out that reflects the whole university's landscape.
All I'm saying is that we need to track it. And how we track it, that needs to be discussed.
Right, how we track it is different than how we operationalize it and I think so we shouldn't could.
I just, I'm sorry that, as, as a recipient, as a dean of a college, I, I experienced, or school, I experienced a lot of that. Part of the problem is some of the philanthropic foundations are more willing to give the money to the foundations of the school than they are through the Research Foundation. And the reason is that a very legitimate expense that, I'm not criticizing it, a legitimate expense that Research Foundation has is its administrative fee to administer these grants. Some of the foundations balk at that. Is there a right to do that? They're a philanthropic operation, they can choose to do whatever they do. In these circumstances, we do not want to turn their money away. And we do take their money and we do administer it at no cost to them and obviously at no cost to the Research Foundation itself. So there, there is a component of that that's legitimate. Although we know that by doing so, we are not in a hundred percent compliance of the MOU. Cause the MOU is very clear and it says, any such should go through the Research Foundation. But I'm telling you what circumstances do occur.
I get it.
But also the MOU is, what, from the eighties, is it?
Nineteen eighty-three.
So it probably needs to be revisited and-
Well, we, we are in the process of doing that.
But, but that's what I'm saying, even the MOU notwithstanding, right? That there's an information, that's, that's an operational issue, who administers the grant? That's different from how do we share and collect data, right? So the reporting requirement can be met tomorrow in theory, even without changing the MOU, which is just when a college foundation gets the money, they report it to somebody, somewhere that's got a central database and doesn't mean that they don't administer the money. So I, I wanted to make sure that we don't-
It's a common problem throughout CUNY. The, the, the connection between the central and the twenty-five campuses in terms of data collection is not seamless. And so much of the work that we're doing, and really I applaud Dr. Wesson for her, I, I think you get a sense of how exacting it is to actually acquire this information under the current system. But once we get there and we operationalize it, wherever it sits, we'll be able to count it, which is your point. Two different issues in terms of policy and accountability.
Okay, thank you. So I think I'm shifting gears here, at least I'm trying to, to the other topic to discuss is CAUS. And I believe you guys have been familiarized with the Electronic Research Administration System as to why we're doing this and what we're doing. So I'll try to go quickly through these. But the idea is that we will have a more uniform and efficient way to submit research and also track research throughout all of CUNY. And that's with CAUS being administered throughout all of CUNY. So first of all, we've got to talk about the team. I believe you guys met Brandon Bagley and Zalicia Abutzi. Those are the project managers. And you'll notice that they are actually located at Lehman and also at Baruch. They're not in the central office. We do have three, three staff members in the central office who are also monitoring and working with CAUS. The idea is that CAUS is a long-term plan. Meaning that we have implementation of CAUS that will go on for the next three years. During that time, the goal is to transition the information and the expertise from our project managers into the Office of Central Research. So as the months progress, Linda, Kofi, and Yvette will take on more and more of the responsibilities and Brandon and Zalicia will, will be able to go back to their day jobs. So that's, that's our team right now. So what is CAUS? I said it's, it's a soft, it's a cloud-based software system. The idea is to streamline our proposal submissions. But it also is useful in terms of our compliance activities. So we, CAUS calls it outside interests, we call it conflicts of interest. Right now, on various ca-, campuses, these activities are handled in different ways. It's not consistent across the campuses. We need to make sure in the Office of Research that we have standardized procedures that are followed on each of our twenty-five campuses. And that's what CAUS will help us with. Also, human ethics, hazard safety, animal oversight. All of these things are handled specifically on different campuses in different ways. And we want to make sure that CAUS can help us to make sure that all the campuses are addressing these issues in a uniform fashion. So we want to make sure we have a streamlined pre and you'll notice we say non-financial post-award management. When we start talking about CAUS, the first question people generally ask is, well, what about Research Foundation? I mean, if you're gonna do all this, are you trying to get rid of the Research Foundation? The answer is definitely not. We need the Research Foundation. The Research Foundation handles our financial activities post-award. What we're looking at with CAU, and our legal activities, what we're looking at with CAUS are non-financial post-award activities. So when somebody says, Rose, do you have research in XYZ? I can look in CAUS and see what awards were made in XYZ. I can look into CAUS and see who are our experts across CUNY in this research area. And I don't have to bug the, the Research Foundation to say, can you run a query for me about XYZ? But anything financial is still being handled by the Research Financial, Research Foundation. Anything legal in terms of these contracts is still being handled by the Research Foundation.
HR, HR too.
And-
Thirteen thousand employees, CAUS won't hire them.
So, so we're hoping, we're planning that, we're talking about growing research. CAUS is gonna help us with that. Facilitate research development across campuses, that's another thing. Who's doing research in XYZ on this campus and on this campus? Right now, I, we have to go to the Research Foundation. CAUS will help us with that. But also with researchers on specific campuses, if they want to collaborate on a specific topic area, they will have insight into what's happening on specific campuses. That will allow better collaborations. Data-driven research, this, this, it will provide us with so much data, we hopefully will not know what to do with it. We talked about Carnegie and broader strategy for CUNY. So how does it work? I think you can see that. There's the pre-award. Still will have the proposal development and proposal submission activities. Will have the compliance components and the non-financial post-award components. All of that is housed within CAUS that communicates with and also communicates from the RF CUNY into CAUS, the financial information. So this slide is to illustrate that, no, we do not have a big X through the RF CUNY. We still need RF and we with CAUS are working with RF so that we can communicate back and forth with the Research Foundation. I don't know how much time we have, so I don't want to take too much mo-, too much longer. But I've said a lot about this already in terms of the disparate proposal and administrative tracking systems across the campuses. It frustrates the faculty. It truly frustrates the faculty when one campus does it another way, another campus does it this way. You're trying to combine those campuses and how are we as faculty members supposed to work with two different mechanisms? So we're hoping CAUS will help us in that respect as well. The administrative burdens, you can't imagine how some faculty are expressing the fact that it's such a difficult process to submit a proposal. I'm, I'm just not gonna do it anymore. I don't, I don't have the bandwidth to work with my sponsored programs office. I don't have the bandwidth to do what I'm doing right now and also try to submit proposals. So CAUS should help relieve some of those barriers, relieve some of those walls that faculty feel prohibit their submission of proposals. And to bridge the gap between pre-award and, and financial post-award at RF CUNY. We're still bridging that gap. So where are we on this CAUS roller coaster? Implementation began in August of last year. We do have a dedicated team. We talked about Zalicia Brandon and the other people in the Office of Research. The new people started in September of 2023 and our newest addition came on in April of 2024. This is our timeline. So right now, we're in 2024 in, you know, in, in middle of 2024 and we're talking about training, not only our grants officers, but our faculty. And, and we've, we've done testing of the, the, of the modules. We're on track. We are on track to have what we're calling a rollout, what we're calling a go-live for August of 2024. There are additional modules that you'll see that I referred to, the hazard safety, the human ethics, and then the fund manager. This is the post-award type activities that won't be rolled out until 2025. But we are on track to roll off CAUS for 2024. So what have we done during the, during this first year? What we did most recently, and you, you can read the slide, but what we did most recently was we're starting to have town halls. So as I said, August is the go-live date. And so our first town hall was held in March of 2024, no, May. It was held in May of 2024. And it was with grants officers, giving them a chance to see where we are in this rollout, giving them a chance to ask questions. The training for the system for grants officers will take place beginning next month in June and run through July. The, 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 the part that I tell you, I'm honestly gonna tell you, that I'm most concerned about are the last two bullets. We are start, we are re-engaging with what we call RFAC, with our Faculty Advisory Committee for the Research Foundation. They were, they were initially engaged when the discovery process was happening with CAUS. Now that we've moved toward the implementation process, we need to have more faculty input. We need to make sure that as we roll this out, our faculty are on board and we have their questions answered. One of our challenges is graduation, is, you know, is, is now. And, and some of the faculty may not be on the campuses during the summer. But the faculty that will be on campus, we will re-engage and also reintroduce CAUS and get their feedback. The last bullet is establishing a CAUS Faculty Advisory Committee. We will do that for the fall of 2024 to make sure that when we roll this out, we do have champions in our faculty members across CUNY who will also speak to the efficiency and the usefulness of CAUS. Any questions about CAUS? That's, we, we will have this in place by August. I doubt that all twenty-five institutions will be using it in August, but it will be available to all twenty-five institutions beginning mid-August is when we turn on the-
I have a question. Maybe it's kind of related to CAUS, but generally to research. How many of the new staff that you bring on are tax levy versus RF compensated? Because that goes right to the bottom line for tax levy funds. As you grow this group, should, shouldn't it be the case that the RF revenue or indirect funds support the salaries of those people?
So I don't know if you're a plant or not. But one of the, one of the things about research is that we want to reinvest in research. Reinvesting in people that run research makes it more difficult to reinvest in research. So if I'm paying someone's salary year after year after year through the Research Foundation rather than tax levy, then my research, I cannot put my research dollars back into growing research. So it's a balance, you're true. It's a balance between tax levy and RF expenditures. But research offices dig themselves into a hole if their- if their personnel are funded solely by research.
But it also puts us in a very awkward position because then OAA looks a lot larger on a tax levy, from a tax levy standpoint.
Then
If, if you're not using those RF funds for salaries, right, you're using tax levy funds. And then so they were on the hook for all those people. Just, I want just a point of clarification. I wanna
I, I, I would like to answer that. It is also favorable for an institution like ours that wants to be seen as a research-intensive organization to show an investment in research infrastructure.
Sure.
That actually is part of the negotiation of the federal government when they determine our indirect costs. And, and so the more you spend out of your revenue, out of your, your tax levy money into your research infrastructure, the higher you can recoup from the federal government in indirect cost calculation.
What is their indirect rate?
It varies by college.
Every college has
Uh, but, yeah, so
Range more or less for them?
It's between about twenty and fifty-seven percent.
Yeah, a- actually, these are extremely low and, and is a reflection of, of that fact. That very few institutions are investing of their uh funds. We charge sixty-two percent uh on, on salaries. But we are able to show that we do invest directly into research infrastructure. It's in our interest. We get the money in another way. So, but Derek's point is very good. It's, it's, it's really the disjointedness between these two revenues, that they're not interconnected in our school. Because we're a very research-intensive little unit. They are connected and one favors and supports the other. The other thing that you mentioned, Rosemarie, and is very important on CAUSE, is that when I came here, one of the first things I was asking my faculty was what is the success rate
Right.
of your applications? And we have no system that can tell you that. If I go to the research foundation, that's what I ask the research foundation. So we have no way of telling you that. We only know when the grant is, is given to the institution, but we don't know if you applied and failed.
Correct.
And this failure rate or success rate is essential in problem solving. We found that people were applying to the wrong institutions. And junior people were applying to a higher level grant and not getting it. If you look at our revenue over time, our revenue keeps increasing, although per grant, we're asking for less money.
So RF is mostly, you guys do almost exclusively post-award? There's no
Yes, we're, we're post-award.
Not all, yeah.
And so now finally, university-wide, yeah, university-wide will be able to solve that very important puzzle.
Okay, that is
Yeah, it's, it's really significant. Thank you, Mary.
That's significant.
Yes. So last point, then we'll be done. It's just a quickie. Um, we are updating our research in focus. That's our monthly newsletter that will come from the Office of Research. Keep an eye out for it. Our target distribution date is June twenty twenty-four. And we're hoping to include all of you in our distribution list. So um keep an eye out. And it will talk about the wonderful research activities that are happening throughout CUNY. And um hopefully address some of these concerns and discussions that we've had today. So.
Well, thank you very much. That was very informative.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you for uh having me.
And good luck in doing this, yes.
Right.
So with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second? Okay, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.